I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on this Tuesday, February 10th, 2015. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00. And we do have two closed sessions immediately following a regular meeting. So, right now, I'd like to do a roll call, please. Councilmember DeLasso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Mayor Skilman?
Here.
And just for the record, we'll show that Vice Mayor Moore is absent this evening. Would you all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of readings of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under this agenda for the minutes of January 27th, 2015.
Move to approve?
I see a public comment waiting, so I'll have to wait just a moment. Yes, Mr. Berich?
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of the audience here tonight, I'm former Kattati City Councilman George Berich. And for some odd reason, over the years, the council, this council doesn't call me by that official title, but I would like to speak about the minutes here tonight as I did the last meeting. I think it's time that we address the minutes in a little different way here. These minutes are very much watered down. They're more of a synopsis or attendance record, almost, of what happened here, but it's nothing like the minutes that you'll see coming out of the planning commission meetings or the minutes that we used to enjoy from our previous city clerk, Sarah Ann, who went to great lengths and great efforts to provide some very detailed and informative minutes. I know that Tammy Taylor is more than qualified to produce those minutes, and I'm sure there's some excuse that the city staff is overworked and underpaid, probably, again. But the fact is that I would like to see these minutes be more accurately reflected on what actually happens at these meetings. It states here that I spoke. Well, I speak a lot as a taxpayer and as a concerned citizen. It's my duty and my right to speak, but, you know, not everyone has access to the podcasts. Not everyone has access, the ability or the resources, to be at these meetings and participate and see these meetings firsthand. I would like to see more attention and more effort put into the minutes to more accurately portray what actually happens in these chambers. I would like for you to consider that and hopefully bring it back as an agenda item so that the public can comment on this, and you can deliberate this in the light of day, and then vote on it appropriately. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment regarding the minutes from January 27th meeting? Okay, seeing none, all closed public comment.
Can I believe I was out of motion?
A second. All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed or abstentions? All right, please show that that's a 4-0 vote with one absent. Thank you. Now I'd like to move on to the housekeeping items. If I could turn to our deputy city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, we ask that everyone please observe the following: silence electronic devices, including cellphones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the west wall of the chamber. Excuse me. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table outside the entrance to the chamber, just inside the entrance to the chamber, and place the completed speaker card in the designated tray located by the city clerk. When their name is called, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
It would have been funnier if that happened right after you said silence electronic devices. All right. Yes, Mr. Berich?
Thank you. For the last two years or so, I've been speaking on this matter because I think it's of great importance to the community. I do not agree with the city council that these housekeeping rules have been produced somewhere, someplace, for the benefit of these meetings and for the public. They're not made in the benefit of the public. They're made to control the public and to intimidate the public and to try to suppress their rights of free speech and so forth. The public should be aware that I've asked many times where these housekeeping rules derived from. Who voted on them? Where did they come from? Was the public ever able to comment on these and give you some input, which is required by law? And to this date, I can't get a straight answer. Evidently, these rules were made up by somebody behind closed doors and pushed through, and it's not what government is all about. It's not that I oppose these rules. When I was on the council, I brought up the very issue that it was high time that we had a code of conduct for the public to follow, or at least advise them to follow, even if we could not enforce them, and also a series of conduct for the council members, because it was getting a little rough up there at the DS at times. But it fell on deaf ears. But after I left the council, evidently someone thought it was a bright idea to conjure up these housekeeping rules, and they've changed a few times over the last few years, and no one seems to know why and how they've changed in their language. But the most striking and most frustrating and most offensive housekeeping rule on this list is the fact that you are asking the public to fill out a speaker's card. And when the city council, under your color of office and under your authority, asks the public to do something, that is easily construed as a request and a requirement to speak, and it is wrong. Not only is it wrong, the state of California, and through its wisdom, have decided, have ruled that it is illegal. It's a violation of the Brown Act for you to require a speaker card from anybody. And the state has been very clear, they want the public to be able to come to these meetings and be anonymous if they so choose, if they fear retaliation from their government, if they think that they're going to get a knock on the door for something that they said inappropriately or threatening to a council member. The state of California, through our representatives, has said, no, you cannot require people to fill out a speaking card. And if you go to any other city council meeting in this county, you will see that they qualify this issue of a speaking card, this requirement of a speaking card, with the fact that it is optional. It is voluntary. And why this council continues to not qualify that it is, no one in this chamber is under any legal obligation to fill out any speaker card at all. And I would ask you to please stop violating the law and get rid of that rule in particular. Thank you. I'm over my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Does anybody else want to make public comment regarding the housekeeping items? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open-for-Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Roanoke Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at 584-9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and also by appointment. For more information, call 794-0304. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, which is N-I-X-L-E dot com. So we'll move on to approval of final agenda. I'll ask our acting city manager if there are any changes to the agenda.
There are no changes.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to citizens' business. Any member, thank you. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. It looks like I have a few speaker cards here. Lori Alderman. It says you're commenting on the consent calendar, item number two. Did you want to wait till consent calendar, or did you have something else that you wanted to talk about right now?
No, I'll wait till the consent calendar.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that before you walked up. Thank you. And, okay, for citizens' business, I have, is it Larry Holberg? Thank you. I apologize if I mispronounced that.
How are you guys doing this evening?
Hi.
My name's Larry Holberg. I work with Luxury Taxi, which is one of the local taxi companies here. I'm here to ask and see kind of what you guys want to do in regards of Lyft and Uber, which are these rideshare agencies. Because we run a taxi company, and, you know, they put out about double the cars we have. I know it gets people home a little sooner, but for us, for me to get another driver is $180 for the permit fee, $50 for the fingerprint fee, and about another, I think, $35, $40 for the drug test. I myself signed up for Lyft to see what, you know, kind of what it's all about and what it entails with their process. Their background check for me, you know, they took a look at my car, said, okay, good. They took a picture of me and my driver's license, kind of compared them, and I guess they sent it through the DMV and whichever to do their background check. But we are required to carry a million-dollar policy 24 hours a day, seven days a week, if the car's in the shop, you know, if the car's going to be running. We can't take our cars off if they're in the shop. They don't give us leniency with their insurance companies. Just kind of curious what, in regards, we can do about that. You know, we're losing a lot of business to an outside corporation that's huge. And they're independent contractors, is how they approach it, and technically, they're, I guess, they got a workaround because they're a rideshare, which is kind of a middle ground between taxi and your TCP license, which would be like your limos and things of that nature. I know that we're losing, I can't get another driver on. You know, Thursday nights, there's, all you see is the Lyft cars in the pink mustaches that run loops, and, you know, they take U-turns in the middle of traffic in the middle of the way, block traffic, and everything else, where the taxi's kind of set up a little bit, you know, out of your way. I get passed by them, I get honked at them, you know, going down East Kattati, and I'm going, you know, 30, 35, and they're pushing 40, 45. Safety-wise and everything else, we're federally background-checked. You know, we're one of the only cities around here that does that. Petaluma is just a state. We're federal, you know. I'm concerned about the safety of the clientele, the bars and the different areas down here in regards that they're not thoroughly background-checked. And if nothing will be done, then how do we reduce our fees so that we can get another driver out? We wish to put another car or two out here so we can get more people home, but I can't put a car out there if I can't pay the insurance, because the driver can't make money, because we're being undercut, because we don't have, you know, they don't have to pay. You know, they don't have skin in the game. They just kind of go whenever they want to go, and there's no repercussions. So, never done this before, I don't know what else to go from there, but I just need to know what we need to do. I mean, as far as, you know, do we take to the point of a taxi strike? All right, thanks.
Thank you very much for that. And what we may be able to do, we're not allowed to comment on it right now because it's not on the agenda, but we can perhaps put it as a future agenda item.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I see we have a new podium here tonight, and I don't know what was wrong with the old one, but it would have been nice to hear a little bit of information from the mayor tonight about this new podium, about the wireless microphone. It's really funny, you know, I've been coming here 16 years to these meetings, a couple of years after I bought my home here, and I can count, I count no less than six different microphones that were bought and paid for and replaced here at the podium over the years because they didn't work properly or weren't set up properly. It's kind of amazing, you know, when you give government something to do, how it ends up transforming into many, many dollars spent. Looking back at 2014, it looks, looking back at Kattati, it was more business as usual last year. We celebrated 50 years of failure, city failure, holding the town back, more city debt, more city spending, more consultants. We're going to spend over a half million dollars on a general plan update, and we paid them a lot of money so far. More city employees that quit voluntarily, quit our fine city, and we fired our city manager. But also, one of the most telling parts of 2014 was the fact that the city lied, and they lied about Measure U on the campaign trail, saying that Measure U passes, we're going to lose that federal grant money. We're going to have to send it back to Washington, D.C. And that fear tactic did not play well with the public, but it was a lie. And when Measure U passed, the city decided that they were not going to make good on that promise to send the money back, and they kept the money, and they lied. So 2014 was an interesting year. The vision statement that city council members and myself worked so hard on, that used to be behind Mr. DeLoso there on the wall, that was proudly displayed, is no longer here. I've asked several times, where did our vision statement go? Is it getting reworked? You know, is it being changed behind closed doors again? But it's gone. And this council takes it upon itself to overwrite what past council members have done, not in the light of day, but behind closed doors. And I would say, at this point, after asking several times, I don't think we're going to see that vision statement back on the wall again. This council's not moving our town forward, it's moving it backwards, and you're holding our town back. We now have a mayor here that has refused to meet with me for five minutes. I requested a five-minute meeting, and I was refused that. Yeah, you remember that? Because I met with Mr. Landman, and I met with Susan Harvey. She was very gracious, and I thank you for that. Mr. Loso was wonderful, we had a nice cup of coffee. But the mayor refused, and I think that says a lot about what we're going to look forward to this year.
All right, thank you for that. Does anybody else have anything they would like to bring up during citizens' business? All right, seeing none, I will close citizens' business. And we'll move on to direction on future agenda items, and I'll look to my right first. Does anybody have anything they wanted to add?
Well, yeah, our first speaker who came up under citizens' business, I'd like to have that issue brought back because, I mean, it sounds like the potential, and honestly, I haven't seen those vehicles, I haven't seen a car with a pink mustache, but that's just me maybe not looking well enough, so, you know, I'd like to look into that. And I know that there's a lot of media attention and a lot of sort of negativity and issues around this in larger cities, and maybe before it really does creep in here and become a problem and put, you know, limo slash taxi services in arrears, I think it'd be nice to at least have a discussion on it. I don't even know where to start, but, I mean, I think we can get some background information. City staff could contact the gentleman and talk to you a little bit more about it, so I'd like to see that as an item.
Okay, great, thanks. Anything else, Councilmember?
That's what I was going to suggest.
There you go. He beat you to the punch.
Yes, he did.
Councilmember Landman?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing in general. I'm not sure what options we have or don't have as a small municipality in dealing this particular issue, but certainly I was going to ask for the acting city manager to talk to Mr. Holberg about that, and I have no problem if it is something we may want to discuss in the future. But I also wanted to ask if, just a reminder, certainly for our chief and for our police department, obviously to keep a lookout for any traffic issues, whether they're private or professional ride services in the downtown. We have enough going on Thursday nights without that, so I appreciate the heads-up about it, and we'll be vigilant for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now I have the pleasure of introducing our honorary mayor. His name is Colton Davis, and goes to Rancho Kattati High School. So if I could have you come up to the podium, Colton? And welcome.
Good evening. I'm Colton Davis. I'm a sophomore at Rancho Kattati High School. I'm in band and drum line, and that's my main thing I do at school. And so my interests are primarily cars and automotive, I'm really into that, and drawing, and sports, I'm into baseball. Played baseball through the Little League program at Kattati for a very long time, so I've done that. And in band, I play saxophone and snare drum, so I'm looking to get better at that. And our band has the opportunity to play in New York, in Carnegie Hall. I believe it's only a handful of bands in the entire country that get to go to its New York Wind Band Festival, and so we're getting ready for that, for sure, so I'm looking forward to that. Some of my goals I'd like to complete would be, I'd like to be a car designer, would be really, this is my main job I'd like to aspire to, or product design, one of the two, because I always find myself sketching and looking for new ideas and things, and I look for, I look into that. And if I couldn't do that, I'd like to do geared towards automotive engineering, so math is important to me for that, and I design things, and, you know, it kind of works together with it, and the cars, so it'll kind of tie it together. And, yeah, that's pretty much me.
Great, thank you for that introduction. So I'm just going to get on the line, and it's just chatting, so don't feel like any pressure.
Yeah.
And we'll just ask you some questions, and then I'll give you a heads-up about coming back for our next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, Mr. Davis, I was concerned about making you uncomfortable, because it's always difficult for people to speak here, but if you're getting ready to play Carnegie Hall, I don't think you're worried about speaking at Kattati City Hall. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'm really impressed to hear that, and I hope that you will make sure that the local papers hear about this and know about this, because that sounds like kind of a big thing to me.
Yeah, it is.
So congratulations, and have a really good one. Liked, I was thinking the same thing as you, and you mentioned liking cars and liking to draw. Car design's a good thing, some background in drafting or 3D modeling's good, and that can lead to a lot of other careers, certainly in the entertainment industry nowadays, too, if you need to, too. So not a bad talent to have, so I'm going to wish you encouragement with that, and look forward to seeing you when you come back.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm really impressed that you get to play in New York. That must be exciting. Does the whole band get to go?
Yeah, the whole band.
Wow, that's really very exciting, and will you get to do some other things while you're out there?
Yes, to see some of the plays and things, and just enjoy the city, so it'll be, it'll be a really good experience.
Yeah, New York's kind of, kind of a fun place to be, so do enjoy yourself. I'm really impressed with how you're taking math to another level and really, you know, looking for practical applications to it. I'm sure that, given your drawings and things now, you know, and your creativity, that you'll do well in the future. And thank you so much for coming to see us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Got a whole list of questions for you. No, it's not going to be that intense. So that's very cool. Band at the Ranch has been getting better and better every year. My kids graduated from the Ranch now a few years ago, but band was really hot, and they were really good. I mean, every time I heard you guys play, pre-you being there, it was just fantastic, and I'm sure you guys just keep honing your skills every year, too, so good job with that. I love hearing that you're playing baseball. That's what my son did at the Ranch as well. And Rancho Kattati Little League, too. I had a long affair with, you know, board member, coach. I always wanted to play, but I was too old. They told me I was just too old, I couldn't play, which was kind of a drag.
Little League.
Yeah, it's a good thing they have the cutoff dates, that's for sure. And are you at all familiar, have you heard, you're only a sophomore, but have you heard of project graduation?
I don't think I have.
Not yet? That's usually the all-night party that's thrown for the graduates every year, and it's something you might want to find out a little bit about. It's good to find out about it before you're a senior, because it, I did that for about six years. It's like the hottest party in town. It's like a $35,000 party that we put on from gifts that are donated and fundraising that we do just for the graduating seniors. And you may think, I'm talking to this old guy, it's going to be incredibly boring, you will have the time of your life, and we don't let you go till 5:00 in the morning, too. So that's another thing. So you're there all night, and it's a safe environment. Last thing I'd say is definitely enjoy New York. That's way cool that you get to play Carnegie Hall, but be back in by 9:00 at night. You know, it's, I'm just saying that for the, yeah, you know why. But anyway, thanks for being here, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks, which will be great.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, and then I was going to ask, have you brought anybody with you tonight that you wanted to introduce?
I brought my mom, Cheryl.
Hello.
Cheryl.
Great, and I was thinking, and I was thinking, too, with your interest in cars and artists' re, and all of that, too, have you ever been to a makers' fair? Because I went with my son, I think he's down in San Mateo or something, once a year, but they also have smaller, local ones, and it's just kind of fun. It's all inventors, and just you get some great ideas there.
He's going to definitely have to look into that. Yeah, it sounds really interesting, yeah.
It's kind of, and the ticket wasn't too expensive for us to go down there, so it's just an all-day thing, and it's kind of fun. There's some really neat, high-tech, and then also some low-tech inventions and stuff like that, so, anyway, I just thought I'd throw that out there. But everybody else, all said the amazing things that you're doing are really fantastic about going to New York and all of that.
Yeah.
That's great, so excited to hear about these things happening for you. So we're going to ask when you come back in two weeks, if you could do a little homework just as far as talking to your friends and saying to them, you know, what do you think Kattati could provide for kids our age that we would be interested in? And then also what maybe you could give back to the city? So any kind of ideas that you may have, you're welcome to share with us when you come back. But don't let it interfere with your regular homework.
Yeah.
So, anyway, well, it's great. We really look forward to having you back in two weeks.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here. And then, just so you know, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, because I know it's a school night, so feel free to cut out whenever you need to.
Okay, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, and we don't usually get public comment on honorary mayor, but I saw two hands go flying up, so yes, Ms. Alderman?
I sent an email after the last meeting I attended about you, whether you could start considering having a youth council again. I was on the youth council in the 1970s in 7th and 8th grade. We raised money for the recreation department. We held a dance called "The Blue Moon Over Kattati," a dance to raise us for a swimming pool. And we would attend Kattati City Council meetings on issues that affected us and give them ideas.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Berich?
Thank you, Mayor. We usually don't get speakers on this matter, this issue, but I think if it was the mayor, maybe just to slow down a little bit, take a look around over the room, and see if there are any hands in the room. But I think it's high time, you know, I've been coming to these meetings some 16 years now. I've watched many honorary mayors come and go. It's been very heartwarming, it's been very entertaining, but I think we've missed the mark. And the fact that I get a lot of citizens who ask me at these meetings and afterwards, what is this honorary mayor thing all about? And I, you know, we're in a meeting, so I can't really explain, and I think to myself, you know, I really don't know. Because the city has never taken the opportunity, that I can ever remember, to explain what this program is about, who's eligible, who's not, who gets picked, what are we asking of these young adults to do? We just call upon these honorary mayors, and a lot of people are kind of dumbfounded. And I think it would be, it would show a lot of class on behalf of the city to maybe just kind of take a minute, as you do on these silly housekeeping rules, and kind of explain what we're doing here, and kind of invite the public to kind of come along and inspire, maybe ask some of the people to get involved. And I think that, you know, this constant complimenting of these young adults, you know, is fine in some respects, but the fact is that I think it's missing the mark. I think, you know, you do need to challenge these young adults, and there is some of that going on with the council, but the fact is, what I think I take most exception to, I'm tired of listening to the false promises that are told to these kids over the years. We've had kids come up here asking for skateboard parks, swimming pools, libraries, better public transportation, teen centers. I mean, the list goes on and on, and I've heard council member after council member give lip service to what they're going to do, and it's just, it's very embarrassing for people who follow council and follow these proceedings and see the false promises and false hope. these proceedings and see the false promises and false hope. I think it does border on being a cruel hoax on this community to actually make some of the promises that you made to these kids when the, when the city is basically broke and you can't even keep the bathrooms open at the public parks. How are you going to put in a teen center? How are you going to put in a skateboard park if you can't even keep the doors open at a bathroom when the kids have got to go? And you can't keep toilet paper in the bathrooms at a couple of the parks, not all the parks, you know? And I think it's high time that people start recognizing this for what it is, this is a feel-good session, and a lot of us love to feel good. It's why I come here, I think. But the fact is, we need to do more. You need to explain what we're doing, why we're doing it, so these kids feel like they actually accomplish something of substance when they leave. And their parents too, who are paying the bills.
All right, thank you for that. Does anybody else want to make a public comment on our honorary mayor program? Seeing none, I will close public comment period and move on to consent calendar. We have items two and three this evening. I do have a speaker card from Ms. Alderman, so I will begin by opening up to public comments on the consent calendar items. And if you want to come up, Ms. Alderman, I understand you want to speak on item number two, the Bickle subdivision.
I would like to address the subdivision off West Katati Avenue tonight. I realize this project has been in the works since 2006, but I have some concerns. The improvements the developers made to the site were much needed and done exceptionally well, however. One of my concerns is that the subdivision is part of this critical habitat of the endangered tiger salamander. Recently, a $450 million restoration plan was passed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the whole west side of Katati past the freeway is part of the critical habitat. There are no breeding grounds for the tiger salamander farther down on Gravenstein Highway towards Stony Point Road. There have been, been this expensive tunnel for the salamanders to cross the road safely so they can breed there. I know others who have confirmed to me near Madrone Avenue in Gravenstein that they have tiger salamanders on their lands. The area of the subdivision has not been studied yet, but there is grant money for the study in the restoration plan. The main reason the area hasn't been studied is because it's part, is because these are private properties. I don't want to squelch the subdivision, but I do think there needs to be more collaboration with federal agencies before the project is approved. There might be construction methods that will do less damage to the critical habitat of tiger salamander who live most of their lives underground. The city, under its general plan, is required to take measures to protect endangered species, and this is not evident as happening with this project. My other concern is West Katati Avenue itself. While the investors make great improvements, there are three blind turns after the subdivision and of course, the dangerous 270-degree turn from Gravenstein Highway. I've complained to count trains repeatedly about the turn, but since nobody has died at the turn and nobody is willing to volunteer to die to get the turn fixed in our neighborhood, it's been low priority on their list. The reason there haven't been accidents all along West Katati Avenue and the blind curves is that there are unwritten rules of the road that the neighbors abide by, i.e. stay to the far right around corners. New residents wouldn't know these unwritten rules. I think the city should be examining this whole section of West Katati Avenue as it can be approved to increase safety, more signs, et cetera. I hope the city does approve the plans for the subdivision and that the city itself will address the section on West Katati Avenue. The improvements made by the investors were wonderful, but I, and I hope the city can match their degree of commitment to the project.
Thank you for that. Does anybody else have comments on the consent calendar items? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on the consent calendar and see if I have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd be willing to pull item number two just to answer the question, have the discussion on the issue of the tiger salamander thing, because I'm sure that's been visited, but it's a good question to have answered.
Okay, so if you can pull up item two, and then do I have a motion on item three?
Happy to make a motion to pass consent calendar item number three. Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, please show that that's a four, zero, and then one absent vote. And then let's, I'll ask our council, do I wait until we get to the regular agenda to talk about item two? Oh, there we go. And never mind, there are no public hearings tonight, so I move right onto regular agenda. And we will start with item two, which was pulled from the consent calendar.
Great. So Mayor, members of the council, item two, the Bickle subdivision. These properties were studied for tiger salamander as well as all the other federally listed endangered species. And they were, they were studied and mitigated several years ago before the site improvements were done. The entire property, as you probably know, was graded for the pads, for the building pads. And prior to that, being able to move forward, all those studies had, have been completed and approved by the Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Fish and Game and North Coast Regional Water Board. So that's all been completed on that site.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely, yes.
Just a follow-up question on that. I was under the impression that the mitigation lands in the county are, the preponderance of them are north of us anyway, right? Like up in the Santa Rosa Plain?
In terms of mitigation banks?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe most of the banks are north and west.
Yeah, which is kind of an oddity, because, you know, if you think about trying to save an endangered plant or animal species and yet, but let's go ahead and preserve a certain amount of land at a location further away. It doesn't always make a lot of sense, but that's how these mitigation banks were set up, so I'm assuming that's, you know, that was done in this project.
Yeah, you know, the typical strategy is avoidance first, and to the extent that you can avoid, then you mitigate. And that was all studied and addressed as part of this project.
Thank you. Well, with that, I'd like to just go ahead then make a motion to approve item three under consent.
Item two?
Item two. I crossed off the wrong one.
And I'll second item two.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a four, zero, one absent vote for item two. I will move on to item three, sorry, four. I almost did the same, I caught it. The Vehicle Maintenance Sonoma County Fleet Services. And I will turn to our acting city manager, Damian Obit.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this item, about a year and a half ago, the council had heard it, and we went forward with an agreement with the Sonoma County Fleet Services Department for vehicle maintenance for our city vehicles. And that agreement has been underway and we, we are getting all of our preventative maintenance done by the, by the county fleet services, which has turned out to be a, has turned out to be a good deal. It works well, they track all our vehicles, they, and it's a consistent level of maintenance across all the vehicles and all in the different departments that we have, which was one of the primary goals of that. One of the things that wasn't considered in the original contract amount was fuel purchases, because the contract with Sonoma County Fleet was for vehicle maintenance only. It turns out that one of the side benefits, although it was available in the contract, but it wasn't something that we were initially going to exercise, was the ability to use their fleet cards. So they have fleet cards like we had fleet cards, except our fleet cards, we were only able to, to use one branded gas station, which, as you know, we have several different types of gas stations in Katati. So it limited us just to that one gas station, but with the Sonoma County Fleet card, we're able to go to any one of the Katati gas stations for refueling. So that turned out to be a, a nice bonus to the agreement, except of course, buying fuel through the Sonoma County Fleet card means that that cost runs through the contract. And so the item before you tonight is to increase the contract, not for vehicle maintenance, because that's come within the budget we expected, but just to account for the fuel purchases that were always there, but they were just accounted for, and it's, accounted for separately, but they're combined in this one agreement now. So hopefully that was clear, that was the intent of the amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do you have any questions from council? Yes.
A couple of quick ones. I can't recall if this contract also included heavy equipment, or is it just fleet vehicles?
It also included heavy.
It does. So they're working on those as well.
Right, right. Which, which was another benefit that I neglected to mention in the presentation, because it's, it's, it's difficult to get all of your heavy vehicles maintained at one time by one entity. It tends to be kind of a hodgepodge if you do it on your own.
No, that's excellent. And one thing I would just state is, you know, the more, if, if the focus on all city vehicles is to purchase fuel in our city limits, that is such a direct benefit, it just, and it keeps over and over again. And I would hope that we encourage all departments, you know, and all city vehicles to make sure that that's, that's the priority. But it sounds like with these cards, it's even easier now. It's not just one station, or it's like, well, maybe I'll just get it in Renter Park because I'm going over that way. You know, fill up in town before you go anywhere and that money stays right here, so that's great. Thank you.
Any questions from you, Councilmember Harvey? Okay, any questions, Councilmember Lammon?
Thank you, just one, and I might be missing something here, very basic, so please bear with me, but we're looking at maintenance being below probably budgeted roughly 40K, as that, so that's what we originally planned. We're looking at roughly 45K, I understand, for fuel. But we're looking at not to exceed of about 125, which is a little higher than about roughly 85,000, those two add up to, is there something else involved that we're looking at and that's why we're budgeting a little bit extra?
Well, with, with the maintenance, the maintenance is pretty consistent, because that's on the schedule. But then there's periodic repairs and, you know, things that come up that, that obviously costs money. So there's a little bit of extra in there just to be able to account for this unforeseen.
Got it, I see. When I look at maintenance, I'm expecting a guesstimate in here for the unexpected things, but if that's not in there, then that makes current sense. And hopefully, hopefully that 40K is enough to handle it, because I'm sure there's usually some expensive surprises. But thank you for answering that, that's, that's good.
Okay, so if we're done with questions, I'll open it up to public comment. Yes, Mr. Berch?
Thank you, Mayor. 10,000 here, 20,000 there, 40,000 there, extra. Good question, Mr. Lammon, but that's a question that's not asked enough. Oftentimes, these type of projects get kind of a little padded up a little bit, and I think in these tough times, it's, it's important to have a eagle eye on really what's happening here. And I personally don't think, just because the city manager says it's a good deal, that we need to take that at face value. It's your responsibility as city leaders to put, put the issue, you know, put your feet to the fire here, put the staff to the, feet to the fire, and really start asking some tougher questions. You know, is it really a good deal to go to the county? What about this project that we had heard so much about, about put Katati first? Katati first! What about our local mechanics? Why aren't they getting this work? Are there any garages in town that can handle this maintenance work? Wouldn't like to have those sales tax dollars right here, Mr. Deloso? I would. Make an interesting point, we want those sales tax dollars here, don't we, Mr. Lammon? Are you awake, Mr. Lammon? We want those sales tax dollars here, we would like these maintenance contracts here. I think you need to ask the question, why are we going out of house? Why are we going out of house for things like the, the video streaming project here? You're losing those sales tax dollars too. This is an ongoing issue, where something's going on behind the scenes, the local contractors and the local garages are not getting local preference. And we need to start asking why, what's really going on behind the scenes here? You know, these gas stations and so forth. One of the reasons, I understand from, from former police chief Stewart, was one of the reasons we were using that, the one particular gas station, is because it didn't have any M, MTDs or something in it, the additive. So we had to go to that, that one gas station. And that was, that was the rationale given for that, while they were given all that business. But I think, you know, start thinking about Katati first. It was part of the vision statement, but that vision statement isn't here to remind us anymore. Maybe we need to bring that back too. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Does anybody else have any comments regarding the vehicle maintenance on the fleet services? All right, seeing nobody, I will close public comment. And I will ask if there's a motion or any further discussion on the item four.
Madam Mayor, I'll just, I just wanted to add one thing on that really briefly. Just, just to clarify the procurement policy, the procurement policy does have a 5% local vendor preference. And this contract was put out to bid, and there's only one local vendor that bid, but in a competitive bid, but they were substantially higher. So, you know, to be the best value for the citizens, of course, we chose the most cost-effective agreement, which is what was chosen at the time.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that explanation. I think it's obvious to anybody, though, that we're talking fleet maintenance. This is a large thing and large vehicles, it's large economies of scale and it's not something that's easily handled, unfortunately, by a local vendor, so I think that's obvious. But thank you for clarifying that.
I'd like to make a motion authorizing the acting city manager to execute an amendment to the county Sonoma agreement, increasing the contract amount of the fleet services agreement.
A second?
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, we have a five, zero, and then one absent vote. Four. Oh, sorry, I can't count. Four, zero, thank you very much. I wasn't counting myself, no. Then we'll move on to item number five, the landscape agreement for maintenance of public landscape areas.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So with the, with the recession in 2008 and the subsequent budget cuts that followed in 2009, the city was, the city and the city council was looking for every and all areas where we could trim costs, and there was a variety of areas that I think we're all very familiar with. One of them was landscape services. And our landscape service agreement at the time was, was trimmed down substantially, actually almost in half of what it had been pre-recession levels. And it had been a long time now since our, our current landscape contractor was selected, it was prior to the recession, and it's been a good, you know, five, six years now, actually, since they've been working for us. And good practice with any, any of these types of service agreements is to, is to go out to bid periodically so that you make sure that you're still getting the best deal for the, for the citizens. And in 2014, the city went out, went out to bid for landscape services, and we did a couple of things with the, with the service agreement. One was we significantly simplified it, so it's much easier to manage both from a city perspective as well as a landscape perspective. And the proposed agreement before you significantly raises the level of service that we currently have in our parks and landscape areas. And we'd be looking at a five-year agreement, which is detailed in the, in the staff report. And like I said, it's the parks and all the landscape areas, including the landscape and lighting assessment districts. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I just would add that if approved, this contract would be slated to start in March, to try to pick it up in the early spring so that they can get a handle of, handle on maintenance before summer hits full swing.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any questions from the council? Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, there's increased service as you, as you explained. Now, is there an increased cost based upon that increased service, or did this particular vendor include that? Can you talk to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, we, in the, in the agenda item, there's the, basically the scope of work, the draft scope of work that we sent out to the contractors, all the landscape contractors in Sonoma County. And you'll see in there, there's a table, landscape maintenance area cost schedule, where there's both a minimum and a scheduled column. And so what all the proposers had provided was a minimum level, which was kind of akin to what we're getting right now, and as scheduled is the higher level of maintenance that, that we're proposing tonight. And the higher level of maintenance is, is more akin to like a pre-recession level of maintenance, if that makes sense. So they, so they all bid on both, and then they were compared side by side against the scheduled maintenance and selected that one.
I'm glad to see that we are doing more maintenance, because there's areas that definitely have been looking a little shabby, so I'm hoping that we'll see some improvements there, because I do believe that it does increase the community look and feel to have that taken care of.
Thank you. Okay. And anything from Councilmember Lammon?
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Just one question. So, it mentions on page two in the analysis discussion that the landscape and lighting assessment districts will receive maintenance at a standard level initially, which seeing this will be higher, this will be better. But we had talked earlier, before the turn of the year, about potentially bringing forward, council, a one-time upgrading because a lot of these areas are way behind because they don't have any inflationary adjustments. And as such, with the money we have to spend, they've gone downhill quite a bit. So, I just wanted to confirm that is still something we'll probably be looking at in the future to some degree possibly. And we'll see some improvements certainly from this, but this isn't included in tonight's action.
Correct. This is the regular maintenance in this action. So, a one-time like upgrade would be a separate action that could be brought forward.
Exactly. I just want to make sure we're clear on that and I understood you correctly. But yeah, I, I'll have comments after public, public comment, but this is good. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
Along those same lines, I think we also discussed reaching out to the folks and opening up discussions around possible changes. Has anything ever transpired with that? Because I'm not sure that the folks that have these landscape districts really understand that, you know, there, there's no increase and therefore the amount you have is really the service that you're getting. And open those discussions. Have we had any of that?
Those discussions have not occurred yet, but I think it might be timely, obviously now, and as we maybe move forward on some type of, you know, if we, if the council decides to move forward on sort of upgrade.
Yeah. I think in conjunction with what Councilmember Lammon's saying, I think that, you know, kind of meeting somewhere in the middle, you know, maybe us, you know, providing a bit of an upgrade. But I think that does us no good if it's just gonna return to its state because there's not enough money to maintain it. So, I think it's, it has to be a joint effort. And so, I wouldn't really want to do one without the other, I think.
Yeah. You know, I will add too that the, the costs that were proposed for the lighting and landscape assessment districts in this contract were actually lower than our pre-existing contract. So, I think those lighting and landscape assessment districts are getting a better deal than they had in the prior agreement. So, that changes the, the cost structure a little bit as well, which is something to consider when we...
Through the chair, if I could amplify that. I think that Councilmember Harvey's brought up a real good point because actually having a chance to talk to a lot of people this last year, I heard this a lot, and you are exactly right. There was a concern about some of these landscape and assessment districts, but a lot of people didn't understand the basic problem. So, I think it does make sense if we go forward, that would be a time to do outreach and involve people who are interested in the community to be a part of this. And I do think now that we have some more cost-effective and more, essentially more thorough maintenance online, this is a perfect time to do it because whatever investments we make in getting these back up to the level that Katati deserves is gonna stay put. And I know we've done a little work with a few of those things this year for a few places, but I think we have the opportunity to do it, do it more so now. So, I'll withhold anything further till after public comment, but that's a good point.
Okay. Thank you. So, at this point, I will open it up to public comment. And I have one speaker card from Lori Alderman.
I'm not sure how this could work with it, but I had a suggestion. The litter pickup was very vague in the contract, and there is Aldo Doby Developmental Services. And there are work crew that, of development disabled adults, and they do parks and run a park. And I would like to suggest that they subcontract, maybe could subcontract or something. They, they are, I did call, they are interested. There's not a lot of opportunities for the disabled in this county to work and having any kind of job site. And they're very thorough. They, they do things like pick up the litter. They would, in Rona Park, the sand, they would break through the sand. They do it much more cheaply and they do it much more regularly. They have work crews that, that's their whole job and they can, they'll do it much more than a regular paid worker. So, I just want to suggest it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Does anybody else have comments on the landscape agreement? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comment and ask if I have a motion.
We have a little more discussion on this?
Oh, sorry. Yes. Open it up to discussion right now.
Sure. A couple of things in, under maintenance activities, which began with page seven, well, actually now I'm on page nine, item C, lawn care. And when there's a mowing schedule, maybe that, that's put out if they, you know, whatever, if the mowing in, in certain parks is every Thursday morning or whatever the case is, it would be nice to make a contact with Ranch Katati Little League, especially for Caterfield right out here. And I assume they're still using Putnam Park. And I don't know if they're using the field behind St. Joseph's anymore, but for years that was maintained by Ranch or they would just do all their own mowing over there. But just as, as a courtesy, just to let them know, you know, hey, here's gonna be our schedule, especially when it comes time for, a lot of times we host Ranch Katati Little League, I'm not a we there, has hosted, you know, tournaments and stuff during the summer months. So, it'd be good to let them know. And I'm, I think this is more on landscape assessment districts, this next comment. But the one issue I have with whatever rates we go with down the road is that we do the work, and I know there hasn't been money to do work, but there's, there's a number of locations in town when you're walking that, you know, a good foot, sometimes two feet of the sidewalk is taken up by vegetation. Now, some of that also happens off of private property. And I'm just wondering if there's anything the city can do to either encourage the property owner, could you mow this, cut this shrub? Or if we ask them, can we go and do it? I'd be happy to go and do it for crying out loud because it's really annoying in areas where, there's a couple of situations where it just, there's like no sidewalk. There's just shrub that comes all the way out. So, that's, I just wonder where, where we could take that, if anywhere? And that's something, I'm not, I'm not pressing you for an answer right now. It's just one of those questions that, you know, is there, I, I can't imagine there's anything that the city can just say, hey, you know, you need to brush that back. But when it's taking up sidewalk and you've got, I see, you know, people with strollers, older people trying to walk, I mean, there's all kinds of people that are trying to have access on a sidewalk and that's what they're there for.
So, really briefly, I'll just say that by ordinance, private property owners are responsible for the landscape in front of their property. So, a letter is simple enough. What can be more of a challenge from a resource perspective is following up on that letter if there's no follow-up by the property owner.
Right, right. Okay. Well, it's just, I'll keep that in mind as I start to write addresses down, I guess. And the only other comment I had was back on page eight, and it was under item B of herbicides and pesticide applications. And to me, it would just be ideal, and I know they have to be used, and I'm not saying you can't, we shouldn't use them, but it would just seem to be ideal if sort of an opening statement is there, you know, to be used as a last resort, you know, that, that kind of concept, not to say, well, you know, I see a weed, I'm just gonna go spray it and that's the simple solution. Sometimes that's the only solution, I get that. But it would just be nice if it wasn't sort of just carte blanche that, you know, feel free and then label it so we know, you know, what's going on. Just a thought on that one. I'm not, you can't really change the, the scope of work necessarily at this point, but maybe in the contract, it might be something that could at least be discussed with whoever gets the contract. Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
Damian, I would like you to address the question that was brought forth by the speaker. It's my recollection that we had made an attempt to use, I believe it was Ode's, to do some of that. And some, my recollection is that that didn't work out, that you tried for a long time. So, if you could speak to that, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, we, we did contact Ode's and we were in discussions with them for, on and off for the better part of a year, probably. And then it, I don't even know if the same executive director is there, but it, at some point during that year, they got busy with other things and they, I guess, lost interest in the discussions. That's what it was left.
Thank you. Councilmember Lammon, anything else?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I was gonna ask, I know that Ode's is on our radar, we've used that. So, that's something where we're open if the opportunity arises and it works, I'm sure that's something our staff and the city would be happy to do, make sure it's something that works good for everybody. Just a general note, I think it was mentioned earlier, this is a city that may be described as failing. I couldn't disagree more. And as I look at this, I would say on the contrary, I think this is a city that's held its own through some rather difficult times, like, like we've all had to. And now, you get the feeling we're all coming through this a little bit and it's a chance to shine. And I'm really pleased about this because these are the type of solid, basic services that a city needs, the type of things that you have to provide that truly allow a community like Katati to be at its best. It's the small, simple things. And I think having the staff, the bandwidth, the time to do this now, this is something all beginning to come together. And I want to thank our acting city manager, Obit, for his work in this this time, but for the last couple of years getting us to this point, because this is a real good thing. We're not talking a small thing. We're almost doubling the amount we're putting into keeping this city looking the way it deserves to look. So, things are getting better and I'm very pleased about that. This is exactly the type of project that I like seeing brought for and the type of service for the community I like supporting. So, if it isn't obvious, I'm gonna be voting yes on this.
Okay. So, now that we've concluded our comments, do I have a motion?
Move to adopt a motion authorizing the acting city manager to execute an agreement with PJM Landscaping to maintain public landscaping for a term of five years.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? We'll show that it's a four, zero with one absent vote. Thank you. And we'll move on to the city manager's report. And I'll turn to our acting city manager, Damian Obit.
Tonight, actually, I'll keep it very brief. And I just wanted to announce that one of our, one of our police reserves, Bennett Knight, who's a local Katati resident, made level one reserve, so he's able to patrol on his own. So, it's very exciting. It's a, it's been a great program for the city, the reserve program. And it, these reserves are typically on duty when we have those peak times of service and it's, well, I'll stop repeating myself, but it's, it's been, it's been, I think, a real win for the, the police department as well as the community who receives the service. And that's it. Thank you.
That was brief. You were true to your word. Okay. I will, I will now open it up to public comment on the city manager's report. Yes, to Mr. Berch?
Thank you for recommending, Mayor. From time to time, I will speak on the city manager's report. And since it was brief and the city manager mentioned that it would be brief, I'd like to speak to the matter of how brief it was. We're paying our city manager about $1,000 per day to manage our affairs, if you calculate it properly. And I think every two weeks, I'd like to see a little bit of a comprehensive report. Mr. Obit is more than qualified to give us a report, a more extensive report than what we had here tonight. There's a lot going on in this town. We've heard city managers tell us that city council members are a liability and cannot be out there pruning bushes and mowing lawns. We've heard about it unless you're with the Katati Little League. That's a special political group there. We're gonna let them mow, but George Berch and his volunteers can't go out and mow and, and volunteer and...
Mr. Berch, if you could stick to the...
Yes, yes. Okay. Anyway, about the briefness of Mr. Damian, Mr. Obit's report, I think we deserve better. We, we need a little bit more explanation of what's going on in the city. If the city is moving forward, we'd like to hear about it. We'd like to hear about what's going on here in the city, a little bit more polished and, more facts and, and so forth. And let's, let's step up our game a little bit here, folks. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Does anybody else wish to comment on the city manager's report this evening? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move on to city council reports. I'll start to my left, Councilmember Lammon.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Let's see. Let's start two things. On the 28th, I spoke as River Watershed Association Chair, welcoming attendees to our 30-year Russian River Friendly Landscaping Guidelines event. Sounds like a pretty minor event, but this was actually, again, another big one. We sold out. We had over 200 people in the audience. For those that aren't aware, the guidelines are basically a set of practices that are designed for being smart, cost-effective, and most of all environmentally sound and protective of the watershed, kind of learning new best practices for everybody that's involved in landscaping. So, having an event with over 200 landscaping professionals there to kind of get up to speed to the latest and the greatest with a lot of different demonstrations, lectures, and cutting-edge people on the edge of these things was a really good thing. Good benefit for the county and certainly good benefit for us since we have the Laguna going through this city. That's what we want to see. For Sonoma Clean Power, very quickly, we appointed somebody new to Business Operations Committee at our last meeting, Mr. George Beeler from Petaluma. Very distinguished and leading-edge background in energy-efficient architecture, starting long before it was popular and having a large career in, at all levels, residential, commercial, as well as industrial, numerous awards, very, very big. And we're thinking this very specific background is gonna be very helpful as we try to assess what are the best efficiency programs as we move forward. So, we're excited about him joining the teams at work. And lastly, let's see, we adopted a resource summary and guidance document. And that simply is a backward-looking summary of the electrical resources that we've procured to date and kind of a high-level guidance for future procurement and what'll be happening next. So, I mention it because if anybody has any questions about, you know, what is this Sonoma Clean Power thing? What are they doing? What are they likely to do? It's actually relatively short, relatively digestible, at least for a government document with some detail, and a really good overview of who we are, what we do, and where we may be going. So, that should be on the website very shortly, and it's available certainly if anybody wants it. I'd be happy to get a PDF to them too. So, happy to share that. Oh, and one more thing, we do have some personnel changes. We're gonna fill in for the time being with a little consulting and legal and procurement departments. And then we'll be going back to setting up an evaluation process and getting back to doing both those things fully in-house. So, exciting times as always.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And I'll turn to Councilmember Delasso. Okay. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes. On February 2nd, I attended the WAC and TAC meeting for water. I'm going to ask, since he's such an expert on it, when I get done, to fill people in on the, the water, because I think your description, I can't do it justice, so I'd appreciate it if you would fill people in. I also attended a special Waste Management Agency meeting. It was a closed session to discuss what's going on with that, so I can't really discuss what it was about, but... And then on the 5th, I attended a tour of the Dry Creek where the, from the biological opinion, they are doing creek restoration. And it was really, really very interesting to see some of what's going on out there where they've taken like big, huge tree stumps and things and created fish habitat. We had the benefit of having one of the landowners come and meet with us. And, you know, he explained how really the working relationship with the water agency was really quite nice in comparison to apparently what happened previously when the dam was put in. So, the, the experiences were very different. They're very happy to see the restoration going on. And it, it is pretty amazing. So, if any of you have a chance to go out and look at it, it's pretty incredible. One of the things that I noted that was out there and it gave me a perspective on something else, I was looking across the creek where they were restoring, and I said, now, is that a car? And they said, yes, indeed, along the creek that when, when people's banks start falling in. I guess it's not unusual for them to put whatever they can put to stabilize the bank out there. And so, we actually saw a couple of vehicles and where, where they're doing the restoration when, when they can and it works out with what they're doing, they have removed some. But it put it in the perspective for me because when I was up in Idaho and the river that we're on, there was a bus, and I never could figure out why the screw bus was in against the bank. And now I know, people just put things in there to save their banks. So, that was pretty interesting. And lastly, I attended the Child Care Planning Council and they're working on their budgets and stuff, so more to come on that.
And so Damian, you could talk about your layers and be helpful.
Sure, you can't tee me up like that. Damian, if I talk too long, you can kill the mic. So what Councilmember Harvey's talking about is the reservoirs and our water supply reservoirs, which are Lake Sonoma and Lake Mendocino. And as everybody knows, January was an extremely dry month. There wasn't a drop of rain in the North Coast. So after that wet December, it got everyone nervous again that maybe that was the end of it. Fortunately, we got a little bit more rain over this last weekend. As of Saturday, the Lake Mendocino was 92%. The drinking water part, and I'll get to the cake thing in a minute, the drinking water pool was about 92% full and Lake Sonoma was 83% full. And now that's not the lake, that's not how full the lake is, that's how full the bottom pool of water in the lake is. So at this time of the year, typically you are overflowing the drinking water pool and you're in your, what they call, if you can, here's a cake analogy, the bottom layer is the drinking water layer and the top layer of that cake is your flood control layer. And at this time of year, typically what happens is your drinking water pool is totally full and water is continually filling up the flood control part of the lake. And the Army Corps who operates the dams has to always release that water to protect downstream residents from flooding. So it is highly unusual, but this is the drought we're in, where we haven't even got to the flood control pool yet. We're still trying to fill up that bottom layer of the lake. So I haven't checked it since the last of the rain over the weekend. Maybe we're getting pretty close now to a full drinking water pool, which is good news, but you can't just hold all the water in the lake. So even if it's 100% full now, if we see no more rain for the rest of the season, that's still not good because you can't just shut off the water coming out of the dams and have a dry Russian River and a dry creek because, you know, canoeists and fish and stuff don't like that. So you have to keep some water flowing. So, you know, so in other words, you need to be in the flood control pool so that when you come into summer, you have a full drinking water pool. I think that's about all I'll say on it, just to spare everyone. But it's, you know, we're hoping for more rain, particularly in the spring, because after March, the Army Corps doesn't release flood control water, so you can actually store it. And the timing is almost as important as the quantity.
Thank you, Damian.
Can I ask Councilmember Harvey or Acting a question for either of you? Just checking up on where we're at with the Dry Creek. I know it's been a few years, it sounds like the project's moving along, pretty cutting-edge habitat project. But I remember we have some pretty heavy timelines for this being able to work out because otherwise then it comes into expensive infrastructure requirements that'll happen. And I'm just curious where we're at in that and if either of you can give me an update.
They have completed the first mile. They are working on miles two and three. They have to get to the six miles. So I want to say, and I wish I'd have bought that piece of paper with me, the report for the pipeline, should they have to do it, is done, it's complete, it's on the shelf. And I think it was 2018 they have to make that decision whether or not...
So it's still not that terribly late in the process?
No, but the habitat seems to be working very well. The residents out there have been very receptive, so they have had not a problem with getting people to do their work. And someone asked the question when we were riding up there, the difference in cost, because it's a pretty big cost, it's like $50 million for all of the miles that they're going to... Okay, but if they have to do the pipe, that pipe will be in excess of $250 million. So they're really hoping not restoring this habitat.
That's why I was kind of asking where this is at, because obviously it's kind of important for our bottom line.
And you can add, but that's what I...
That was a very good explanation. I think the only thing I'd just throw in there is that they're supposed to, in the midway point in the habitat assessment, they're supposed to assess the habitat, and that's a decision point that Councilmember Harvey referred to. And they've agreed to what the assessment criteria are with NIMFs and the various resource agencies.
Right, and it's kind of hard because when they get done with, you know, kind of the first few miles there, it still is not really as long as you might like to be able to make that decision.
It's hard to make an assessment with just that. It's a small part of a whole system.
Well, right, I mean ideally, it would be like great if you could wait for like five years to kind of say, yeah, this is really working, but they're not going to have the benefit of that.
Crossed fingers.
Yeah. Looks good.
Okay, and then I was just going to report, I had a conference call regarding the water bond issue on February 4th, so I have updates on that. And then I attended the crab feed on February 7th, which was a great deal of fun. So I highly recommend it to everybody to attend. And that was put on by the Chamber of Commerce. All right, so we are going to adjourn to closed session. I'm going to read the two items and then see if we have any public comment on them. The first item is public employee appointment pursuant to California Government Code Section 549-57 Sub B, Sub 1, Title City Manager. And the second item is conference with negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57.6, Agency Representative John Delasso, Unrepresented Employee City Manager Candidate. So do we have any public comment on those two issues? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. We will adjourn to closed session at about 8:17. Thank you very much.